All right. I'd like to call to order the April 18th, 2023 meeting of the Marietta City Council. Before we continue to do business, I want to note that during the announcement of closed session, action will be done during our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Would the city clerk please call for a roll call and determination of quorum, please?
Councilmember Warren.
Present.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Stone with an excused absence.
Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on our closed-session items only?
Seeing none.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed-session agenda?
City Council will meet in closed session on four items. CS1, threat to public services or facilities. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957A to consult with the Chief of Police and City Attorney on matters posing a threat to the city. The City Council will also meet in CS2, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Sections 54956.9D2 and D3 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in one case. The City Council will also meet in conference with labor negotiators. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 as listed on the agenda. And the City Council will also meet in CS4, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4 because the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in one case.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. With that, we are going to go into recess and into closed session, and we'll reconvene at 5:30 with a workshop followed by 6:00 PM regular meeting. Thank you so very much. I'd like to call to order, and we're reconvening the 5:30 workshop from closed session. The report out from closed session will be provided during our 6:00 PM regular meeting. Would city clerk like to do a roll call for determination of a quorum, please?
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Stone with an excused absence.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving to our Fire Chief Malloy, Standards of Cover staff, may we have the report, please?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to present you our updated Community Risk Assessment Standards of Cover for Marietta Fire and Rescue. What we're presenting tonight is a culmination of a lot of work from a lot of people on our team. Deputy Chief Mike Lopez, Captain Eric Ackerman, who's our accreditation manager and was our training captain during the process of this, Jennifer Antonucci, our EMS coordinator, Don Morrison, our management analyst, and then all of our battalion chiefs, Steve Keen, Mike Ramos, Dave Perez, Adrian Reinertson, our fire marshal, and Rachel Hollinger, our disaster preparedness coordinator. I want to draw special emphasis to Captain Ackerman and Don Morrison, both of who have gone through the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland's Critical Risk Analysis Standards of Cover program. So they've been trained in how to do these programs for the communities that they serve, and that's a tremendous asset to have in-house in our organization. So tonight, I'm presenting the Community Risk Assessment Standards of Cover. This document that you have before you, I believe it's 165 pages, and it's a deep-dive analysis of how we deliver service to the community in the form of emergency services. If we look at this, I'm going to work through the document with you. For anybody that's in the audience and does not have a copy, you can scan the QR code, and we have a digital copy online that you'll be able to work through with us. It's a PDF from this, so you can work through the table of contents. If you click on it, it will move you to the pages that we have outlined here. We did our last CRASOC. Can we just accept that CRASOC is the Critical Risk Analysis Standards of Cover? It's a mouthful. So we did our last one over five years ago as part of accreditation. It's required that you have updated CRASOCs every five years as part of your accreditation, and we are going through the re-accreditation process as well. So we had to update this document. We updated it several months ago, and it takes a while to put all of the data together and make this. The SOC is a comprehensive study of the city's risks and services delivered by Marietta Fire and Rescue designed to mitigate those risks. The document focuses primarily on how effectively we provide emergency services to the residents and visitors of the city. Analysis in the SOC identifies specific hazards in the city and assigns a risk level to each of those identified hazards. When we look at this document, it's broken after the executive summary. It's broken into 10 sections, and we're going to go through each of these sections, and I'll touch on what they are briefly. And then at the end, we can go back in and look at any of the sections you want to with questions. Nine is bolded there because that's the evaluation of the service delivery and really the meat and potatoes of the document. This is how we deliver services to our community, and it sees, it measures our metrics to see where we're reaching our goals and where we aren't reaching our goals and identifying those gaps. We start with Section 1. That's on page 4 of your document. This has the city boundaries and features, legal and financial basis for the city, the planning zones we have within the city, all of our infrastructure, including transportation, our climate, geography, geology, topography, and then our current population and demographics. And if you look at this document and you read through, it's about 26 pages, I believe, in this section. It's really a great history of Marietta and how it came to be. Section 2 is the history of the fire department and how we serve the citizens of Marietta, and this provides a historical perspective on how we developed and grew as an organization, and then the milestones that came along the way for our organization. And it provides a brief overview of our current organization's divisions, programs, and services that we deploy throughout the community. Section 3 is our current levels of service and delivery programs, and this provides an overview of how the agency provides services in the following programs, and we call these programs of delivery in an SOC. It's fire suppression, emergency medical services, technical rescue, hazardous materials, wildland fire services, and community risk reduction. Section 4 has our current deployment coverage areas, and this is page 50. This is the deployment of stations, apparatus, and personnel throughout the community, and a description of each of our five stations and their response area size and how we respond in those areas. This map that you see before you on the presentation is actually from our 2011 general plan in the city. Next, in Section 5 is a summary of our community response history, and this starts looking at how we've responded throughout the city. Five years of data demonstrating the distribution of all of our calls by type in each of the five station response areas. We break it down to overall incidents, fire incident distribution, and EMS incidents by distribution, and you can start seeing by the pie graph that just because you have a lot of EMS calls in one area, it doesn't mean you also have a lot of fire calls. It varies by demographics and makeup of the city. In Section 6, we talk about the most recent strategic plan we did in 2021. That was just before I came here. In the strategic plan, you look at internal and external stakeholders, and you identify priorities for your organization and the expectations that you have of the agency. The expectations look at both what people from the outside and people from the inside expect of their organization. So we had a work group of key internal department stakeholders, and they developed seven strategic goals along with multiple objectives for each goal, and the findings from this process are listed in this section, and also they're listed in the strategic plan that the council adopted a little over a year ago. Station 7 is our community risk analysis and risk levels. This provides a description of how the agency analyzes categories of risk across all programs. It presents a breakdown of the risk types and severities by station response area and describes the critical task analysis for each response type and level. And the credit goes out to our crews and our Fire Prevention Bureau that went out and looked at every occupancy in our city that can be construed as commercial, and we did a risk analysis on each of those occupancies placing it in special risk. And then we looked at EMS models to determine areas and how they would affect EMS response as well. Some of our elderly care and congregant care facilities are contemplated in this as well. Station 8 has our historical perspective and summary of system performance. This data is presented demonstrating the agency's performance over a five-year period, as we mentioned, for each severity level of all response types, and that's in that system programs. Response data is broken down into three components. Alarm handling time, that's essentially the time it takes from the time somebody dials 911 until dispatchers process the call and ship it to our fire departments when they set the tones off in the station. Turnout time, that's the time from the time the alarm goes off in the station until we're leaving the station with our crews. So we measure those separately. And then travel time. Travel time is the time it takes us from the time we leave a fire station until we arrive at the scene of whatever that incident we may be responding to is. And we break this down not just by first unit but by second unit, and then what we call effective fire force, which is when we get enough units on scene to actually deal with the emergency that we have. When you add all of those together, that's our total response time. When we take that data that we've gathered from Section 8 and we analyze it, that's Section 9, the evaluation of the service delivery. It's on page 112. The data from the previous section is evaluated for each response program provided by the agency, and then we identify the gaps that we have in what is based on the standards that we've set in both the general plan, which is based on standards such as NSPA 1710 and then ISO ratings from the insurance services. We look at the causal factors for those gaps, and then we discuss actions to close the gaps, and we present those together with a performance improvement plan for ourselves so we can do better. And then number 10, this is our Performance Maintenance and Improvement Plans. We talk about how we're going to plan to ensure that we continue to make progress and we maintain improvement service delivery for the city, and then we identify the specific responsibilities of who is going to be responsible for what improvements in this plan. So that's working through all of the sections. Once we go through those sections, we have essentially the completed document. We've identified the specific hazards in the city. We've assigned risk levels to each of those hazards in the city, and then we've analyzed the effectiveness of our current deployment model using response time from five years. From this, we develop a report on significant findings, and we provide recommendations to address those significant findings. So the significant findings we found after all of the analysis that's found in these 10 sections, and this you can find on page 2, I believe it is, in your document. Marietta Fire and Rescue does not currently meet any of the overall response time goals adopted by the City Council as defined in the general plan 2011, which is what was based on NFPA 1710 response time criteria and ISO. Our emergency medical dispatch has increased call handling time. This was expected. It takes longer to go through an EMD process, and that process is, we're developing it, and the point of that is so we send the right resource to the right incident. So EMD does take longer, but acute level calls and the EMD process come off so quickly with automatic dispatch that the call handling time doesn't really affect it as much, but we did find that that has increased our call handling time. And then familiarity with this EMD system needs to improve, so those of us that are doing it, we need to get better at doing the process. We also found that our current automatic aid agreements are not sufficient to take advantage of the upgraded technology that we have like EMD and like our CAD-to-CAD that's coming in the county that we have here. And we need to do some additional data analytics training because we don't have any redundancy in that. We just have really one person that's capable of doing a lot of our analytics in-house. So I want to talk a little bit about the first one, us not meeting our response criteria. You've seen this before. If we go back, this is, I believe it was page 90, the maps, and we have this by every, the response maps is page 90 or 91. We have this broken down by every primary response area in our city, all five. Any green dot is a good response. That's under six minutes, and that meets general plan. Yellow dot, over six minutes, still decent with travel time. Where we start seeing discrepancies is when we get into the nine minutes and over in travel time, and that's the red dots. You'll see red dots all throughout the city. This happens. Generally, what a red dot means is the closest unit was on a call, so we had to send the next closest unit to respond to that. So you're going to see red dots. We base everything on 90th percentile, so each one of these dots is a call, but as long as you're meeting your response criteria at the 90th percentile, you're okay. So you'll see these red dots. What we don't want to see is a concentration of red dots, which we see here. This is the area off Hunter Road. It's between Council District 2 and Council District 5, essentially the border and on the Upper East Side of the city. So we have trouble serving this part of our city in our suggested response times because we don't have resources close to that. We have a lot of traffic delays getting to that area because Hot Springs Road and then Winchester Road. We know these are very busy corridors, and we don't have a resource sitting up there right now. And we've discussed this before. You saw this at the Golds workshop, but we serve our city through five fire stations, and we have, you know, an area out here that we're not able to serve. We don't have close proximity. So we want to make some recommendations based on the findings that we have, and the first recommendation that we make is that the city begin the process of planning a station on the east side of the city to serve this area that we have a gap in our response time. The second is that we negotiate new automatic aid agreements, and the good news is this is in progress, and you will be seeing an automatic aid agreement for the entire city, not just a very small portion of it, which we currently have with CAL FIRE, but we're working on an automatic aid agreement that you'll be seeing before council very soon. It's in the final stages. Next, we need to research modern traffic preemption systems. The outdated system that we have with OptCom, it works, but what it does is when we see a light, when we're pointed at a light and we strobe on that light, the light will open. The problems we have is with the extreme traffic congestion we have in the south side of our city and then going up that eastern corridor. We need traffic to be out of our way before we get there, and there's systems in place now that are coming online that allow you to route, and your traffic lights open as you're routing to the incident, so you don't even have to open the traffic lights. They're open before you get there, and everyone in front of you just thinks that they've caught the greatest blessing, that they have the best traffic light preemption in the world, but it's really making it so it can work for fire, and these systems also work for our brothers in PD, so we would be able to have this for both fire and PD. The good news is we've already identified some systems, and we're looking at them, and we have put some requests in our budget to further that process over the next couple of years. Next, we want to monitor the use of the new automatic dispatch system to improve call handling times. When we did this report, we had brought EMD on, and we were working through the process. Subsequent to that, we have actually started automatic dispatch. So it gets to a point, we were manual through the EMD process, and we had to ship the call. Now our dispatchers get to a point where it gets to a determinant where it says this is what it needs, and the computer automatically sends it, greatly reducing call handling time, which makes it so we're able to get out the door quicker, and we reduce one of those three steps of the overall incident response time. Next, we need to provide annual EMD training and continuing education for our fire dispatchers. We have the best cops and the best firefighters in Riverside County, and I'm just going to say California because I think I'm entitled to say that. We need to make sure we have the best dispatchers as well, and we should invest in them as much as we invest in our other safety personnel. They truly get us started, and they take us till the end of the call, so we need to make sure we're investing in them as well. And we need to train our prevention and suppression personnel in risk assessment. That's one of the things we found when we were out doing our risk assessment of every commercial occupancy, is that we need to make sure that we're doing that well, and we had all new prevention staff, so we were working on training as we did it. We want to continue that and make sure that we're training them to be the best that they can be as well to continue this risk assessment. And then finally, we're going to refine our software to provide performance reports to MFR stats and personnel that are live, so we have live dashboards. We've already addressed this. We've brought new software on that we're using now and fine-tuning so we have it going forward in the future. This gives us a live view so we know how we're performing, not historically, but actively right now. So these were the recommendations we found. We've been through this document. I know it's a long document, and that's just a book report, an 165-page book. I'm happy to go through this. I know that you haven't seen this before. You haven't read this. You have not gone through the data that's in this. I would be happy to meet with anyone that wants to talk about this, go further into a deep dive, but what I can assure you is we've done a very strong look at the data of how we serve our community, and with this, we've been able to find where can we do better, and that's what this document brings forward and the things we're trying to work on with Marietta Fire over the next several years.
Thank you so much for an amazing 165-page reading. I definitely am going to be going through this. Truly an amazing resource for all of us. I have a couple of questions, if my fellow colleagues don't mind me starting, and then I will turn it on over to them, but could you tell me what an automatic aid agreement is?
Automatic aid is when we have periphery areas of our city. Automatic aid is how you respond resources across those lines. Let me give you a perfect example. We had a call yesterday at 6:30 PM. I was still sitting in my office listening to the calls as I was working on this. So 6:30 PM yesterday, we got a call that was off of Hunter Road. The call, our engine, as we know, takes a while to get out there. Our engine took nine minutes, 34 seconds to respond to that call. Engine 83 is across the street from that. Engine 83 is out of CAL FIRE, and we want our own engines running our calls when we can, but if Engine 3 was gone, our next engine would have been even further. It would have been Engine 1 that has to cross across the whole southern side of the city. So really, what we want is our community to be served. If somebody was having a heart attack, we want the closest resource. We'll figure out the rest later. Right now, we don't have an agreement that makes that happen automatically. People have to pick up phone calls. So as soon as our dispatch finishes processing the EMD, which takes about two minutes, as we saw, average of about 2 minutes, 30 seconds, we got shipped off before that, but as soon as they finished that, then they have a code. They pick up the phone, they call CAL FIRE. CAL FIRE then puts that in their system. Their system then pulls the closest resource, which is Engine 83. Dispatch is Engine 83. Engine 83 was dispatched nine minutes into that call.
Right.
No fault of theirs. Maybe they weren't dispatched. They went responding on the radio nine minutes into that call. That was yesterday at 6:30 PM. This happens all day, every day. Captain Burke can testify to this. He works at Station 3. It takes a long time, and this is not, we're not saying that they're slow out of the station, anything like that. It's just a process. So the automatic aid agreements allow us to put in place, and we get to set the standards that we want, but it allows us to make our computers touch. So our computer-aided dispatch can talk to their computer-aided dispatch, and if you have a critical call, like a CPR, we can still have it pull our resources, but we can have it pull the closest resources, and that works for our residents and the residents around the periphery of our city as well. So we have a new automatic aid agreement that we've worked on. It's going to be a template for everything we're doing in Riverside County, and then how Riverside County and San Bernardino County along their periphery are going to be working as well, and that's something that's going to be coming to council soon.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, and I think that's very important. I'll move to any other my fellow colleagues have a question. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you. This report is, should be eye-opening to many people. I am not unfamiliar with your response times. That is mostly District 5, and being on ride-alongs and watching the department try and get there in a timely manner to save somebody is good at best. Trying to get down Marietta Hot Springs Road at certain times of the day is literally impossible sometimes. So Station 6 is the answer to saving people's lives, and I appreciate all the data because this backs up the need. And so thank you so very much, and I look forward to seeing this through and sometime down the road have some services of Marietta out there in Station 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Holliday. Any questions?
No questions, just a comment. Great job in putting all that data together. I look forward to reading it and looking at all the numbers because that's what I do, and I'm sure I'll be setting up some time to sit down with you.
Happy to.
Thank you.
I'm happy to discuss it. I love talking about the fire service, so anytime.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Great work, as always. You guys are awesome. The question I have is the French Valley Corridor where Station 6 would help out in that area where those red dots were. That was based on one year of data?
Five years of data.
Five years, okay. And that would, with all the development going on in the housing going up around and everywhere else, that would likely make that much worse, correct?
It will make it much worse, and one of the things you have to consider is Station 3. If you go, if you dive into the data here and you look, Station 3 is our second busiest station, but it's increasing every year because there's so much density in that area, and we have a lot of growth coming. So you don't just look at what's the closest resource, but you have to look at what's your second closest resource. And when your second closest resource is the busiest fire engine in the station and the busiest medic patrol in the station, you need to start looking at where does the next response come from? So it's not just growth in that specific area, but growth in the entire city in general. If you go through the annual report, which I've shared with everybody up there, you can see that our call volume escalates every single year. That growth in call volume means it's more time on task for our fire engines and our medic patrols than we're having units assigned. When units are assigned, they can't respond to the next emergency. So we've addressed this with medic patrols. That's a very good step, and that really helped the city out. But when you start looking at the growth we have all over the city and all over our periphery, we have to address it with additional resources, and if you're going to be adding additional resources, we really have an area we need to put them into as their home base.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lavelle. I have another question for you, Chief. Obviously, your data shows we need Station 6, and we don't need it yesterday, but we need it today. So it's always been, you know, this has been a rumor since I got on council, we need another station. Well, now that we see the data and it points to that, and it's truly between life and death for a lot of these calls, what will be our temporary fix? Can we do something to, it's going to take a while to build a station, right? And a lot of means to do that. So is there a temporary fix we can do with that? I know that we talked about doing the automatic aid agreement, which will help with that, but is there a temporary?
Well, our resource allocation is tied to fire stations, so we have, our two busiest units have, or our two busiest fire stations have two units at them, medic patrol and an engine at each of those stations. That's really helped this response data because we always have a, not always, but it takes, you have to have two calls in three's area to drain that resource, so you have to go to your next furthest unit. So already having the medic patrol is a good step in the right direction. Automatic aid agreements is a good step in the right direction, and I think short of having, parking a fire apparatus in somebody's driveway and having them post out there, the best path forward, we've done a lot of what we can already, but adding resources out there is the next step.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Madam City Manager.
So we'll be bringing forward at the budget workshop, there's an item in there in the, I think it's, it's in there for a study for Fire Station 6, and so the chief and I have been kind of looking at some options for that, so we'll be coming back to you sooner than later with that.
Thank you so much, Madam City Manager, and thank you so much, Chief. I'm going to move to the city clerk to see if there's any public comments on this workshop
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seeing none.
Thank you so much. Any other council member comments or seeing none? Thank you, staff. This is a receive-and-file-only, so thank you so much for your amazing data and information. I know I'll be setting up a meeting with you too just to decipher the dots, so thank you so much. All right. Well, it's 5:57, and we will actually adjourn for three minutes until 6:00 PM, and then I will move forward. So I'm going to call for a recess until 6:00 PM, when we will return back to our regular meeting. Thank you so much.
No more great voice clips, huh?
I'd like to call to order the 6:00 PM regular meeting. Good evening, everyone. We're going to now reconvene the April 18th meeting of the Marietta City Council from our closed session. Madam City Attorney, please provide the report for a closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on four items. The first was a threat to public services pursuant to Government Code Section 54957A. The council was updated, no reportable action. The second item was to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation because there is significant exposure to litigation in one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and D3. In this matter, the council... In this matter, the council was again updated. There's no reportable action. The third item was to confer with its labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding negotiations with four different groups. The council was again updated, and there's no reportable action at this time. The final item was regarding anticipated litigation for the council to consider whether to initiate litigation in one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. The council was updated, there's no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. Moving on to our city clerk. Could we do a roll call for determination of a quorum, please?
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone. Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present, with the exception of Mayor Protem Stone with an excused absence.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. And tonight, it is my honor to have Councilmember Ron Holliday lead us in both. Yes. Thank you so much, Councilmember Holliday. And moving on to presentations this evening. City Commissioner recognition. Before I ever begin, I understand there are some commissioners, quite a few of them, which were unable to attend but are live streaming. So welcome. So we will move forward with their acknowledgements as well. The city has five active commissions and committees. They are dedicated to address specific topics in the community. They are all volunteer positions. Needless to say, these commissioners are some of the most dedicated individuals in our community. Every single one of you brings something invaluable to the table. The needs of our community would not have been met without your guidance, support, and expertise. Every two years, the city council appoints two commissioners to each commission. With that, we would like to take a moment to thank all our outgoing current and new commissioners. If there are any new commissioners, could you please stand? I see. Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you for your willingness to serve our community. As a commissioner, we look forward to collaborating with you. Any current commissioners, could you please stand? Current commissioners. Thank you for your continuing to serve as a commissioner, and we hope that you'll be able to bestow your knowledge and guide the new commissioners in their role. Thank you so very much. And lastly, we would like to thank nine outgoing commissioners. And I will begin with the Library Commission, Alexandra Thorworth. She has served from 2019 to 2022. During her time, she's helped establish a subcommittee exploring the addition of a potential mural to the exterior of the library. Moving on, Councilmember Holliday.
Also with the Library Commission, Tori Waddlington, who served from 2019 through 2022, and during his time promoted and aided in the success of community events such as a summer reading challenge with the school district. I understand Mr. Waddlington is here tonight. Would like to say a few words. Please come forward. Or not.
Councilmember Holliday, he did just inform us he has to send his regret. Something came up.
Thank you. Turn that over to Councilmember Warren.
Thank you. With the Traffic Commission, Arnie Chandler, who served from 2019 to 2022, has always been committed to listening to and understanding the concerns of Marietta residents and businesses. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you. Tyler Ferrari, with the Parks and Recreation Commission, served from 2019 to 22. As a commissioner, Tyler ensured parks across the city remained a source of pride for residents and community members. And I had the pleasure of serving with Kellen Falconeri on the Planning Commission. He served from 2020 to 2022. Falconeri served as the vice chair and was instrumental in providing insight during the project reviews.
With the Planning Commission, James King, who served from 2021 to 2022, provided a key lens for project reviews such as safety, lighting, landscapes, hours. Given he works for Riverside Sheriff as an officer, one of the many fun facts learned about James is that he has gone through a drive-through on his horse. Okay. Also, Joan Sparkman with the Measure T Oversight Committee. As a part of the Oversight Committee, Joan Sparkman was one of the three members of the committee. She was one of the specialized positions having financial background. There is no doubt her contributions and dedication contributed to ensuring the transparency of public funds. Mayor?
Now, we'll recognize two council members who have also served on our commissions. As part of the Traffic Commission, Councilmember Warren's term was shortened as she took the role of council member. She served as chair, and her efforts on the commission have contributed to ensuring the safety of not only city streets, but local neighborhoods and school zones. Also, Councilmember Lavelle, serving on the Planning Commission from 2019 to 22. As a commissioner, he had the honor of serving as chair for the Marietta Hills Specific Plan Project, all while balancing public participation during COVID restrictions. Again, on behalf of the city council, I'd like to say thank you all for your time and dedication to your respective commissions. While your time as a commissioner has ended, I hope you will not be a stranger and remain involved with the community, especially our city. With that, we will recess into a reception here in the lobby where we can celebrate all our volunteers, and we will be back in approximately 10 to 15 minutes. Thank you all for coming, and we're going to recess into the lobby for refreshments and cupcakes. All right. Well, now that everyone had a little festivities, I'm going to reconvene our meeting. And Madam City Clerk, we still have the same quorum, so we're good, right? All right.
Yes.
So we're going to move to the approval of the agenda. So moving straight into business, any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
I'd like to call for a motion and a second to approve the... You guys are faster than a speeding bullet. And all those votes?
Yeah, I was going to try and do that. Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you so very much. Yeah, we have a...
My apologies.
Yeah.
Oh, hold on. There we go, I resolved it. Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you so very much. Department Commission announcements, Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to, on behalf of staff, thank everyone who attended our extravaganza, as well as our firefighter barbecue this last Saturday, so.
Thank you so very much. Two amazingly fun events. Governing Board Commissions Committee reports. So Madam City Clerk, shall I take? Madam, well, let's go with Councilmember Warren.
Of course, yes. We're, we're doing GBRs.
Yes. Any Governing Board Commission or Committee? And then we'll move on to our, then we will move on to our governing body announcements. So if you have a commission or committee report, you can do it now. Councilmember Warren.
At this time, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Oh, that was very easy. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the very first meeting for the Mental Health Subcommittee for, Subcommittee. We attended a meeting with American Medical Response and Riverside County Emergency Medical Services with Mayor Protem Stone, Chief Conrad, Chief Malloy, Kim Summers, City Manager Kim Summers, and Supervisor Chuck Washington. We had a discussion pertaining to the mental health discussion of appropriate triaging of emergency services and a discussion of other ideas resourcing for this population of patients. It was a great meeting, and I look forward to what unfolds out of that for how we can better serve that, that population of people.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lavelle. And Councilmember Holliday?
I did not have any meetings between last council meeting and this one.
All right. And I will concur with you. I had nothing as well. This month and coming up in two weeks, it'll be very busy, but right now, nothing to report out. Madam City Clerk, any public comments on non-agendized items?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any, on any matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Connie McConnell.
Good evening. I missed last council meeting, and I heard that Jared really missed me, so I had to come tonight. Is that right, Jared? Anyway, we had a great market last time, and I'm looking forward to having a really good market this time now that the weather has kind of cleared up and been a little nicer. We have the crowds coming out. We really like it when we see our council members and our staff members come and, and join us. It's fun. Thank you, guys, for, for doing that. One of the things we're going to be looking forward to on May 4th, well, we're having one this week on the 20th, but then the next one on May 4th, we're going with a theme of "May the Fourth Be With You." So anybody who wants to dress up, we would encourage that. And if you'll come by our booth across from the alleyway, we'll be there. And we will then judge your appearance, take your picture, and we will put the three top winners on our social media. So that's how you will be rewarded. But anyway, we wanted to announce that ahead of time, and Dominique is very helpful with getting this information out. So we're looking forward to that. You know, our nonprofits here are really dedicated to revitalizing the city. And we feel that having events downtown really helps with that revitalization. So we're looking forward to doing more. Next year, you might hear about something called Marietta Motor Madness. It'll be kind of sort of like the Rod Run, but it'll be dedicated to off-road vehicles. And so we have that kind of in the works going on. Just, I'm just throwing out these warnings, so when you start hearing about it, you'll, you'll know. And all the people in the TUPs are going, oh, my God, not again. Anyway, thank you for joining us on the market nights. We appreciate it, and I'll see you next time.
Thank you so much.
Monica Mestas.
Welcome, Monica.
I'm super nervous. I don't like speaking publicly, but I feel this is important. Early morning, Friday the 7th, a coyote jumped my fence and killed my dog. She needed to go outside and body earlier than usual, 4:45. It was just getting light, so I let her out. When she didn't come back, I searched my yard, then I found the blood. I've lived in Old Town Marietta since 2014, the corner of B Street and First, one block west of Washington, behind a liquor store. I have never seen or even heard a coyote. They weren't on my radar. They should have been. I called Animal Friends of the Valleys and was told that we live in their world, and they're just looking for resources. I said, yeah, like tiny 15-year-old duff dogs. I think coyote attacks are happening much more than we realize. People aren't talking about it. But AFV wouldn't even take a report, so we have no statistics, no data. I'm here tonight to bring awareness to this problem, and I would like you to direct animal control to document these attacks and then do something to prevent them. Remove the offending coyote or coyotes, or at the very least, let local residents know that this is very real and their pets are in danger. I care about wildlife, all animals. But coyotes have become habituated to human and pet populations. Yes, we've encroached, but you can't tell me there's a shortage of rabbits and squirrels for them to eat. Taking a small dog is simply easier than chasing down a squirrel. Coyotes are no longer afraid of humans. They are multiplying unchecked. Southern California populations are between 250,000 and 750,000. Old Town Marietta is vibrant with people and activities. You wouldn't expect coyotes to be running up and down the streets. Thursday evening, the night before, the attack was market night. A friend of mine wondered if, if trash cans were picked up immediately after the event or the next morning. I don't know, but if they're out all night, they could be an enticement. As you can imagine, I'm very upset about what happened to my innocent little dog. More importantly, I want people to know that our pets are under attack. Thank you.
Sorry for your loss, and thank you for your words. Madam City Clerk, any other comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the consent calendar, approval of items 1 through 9. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any requests from city council to pull any of the consent calendar items for discussion or abstention? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
Can I call for a motion? And everyone vote? Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our public hearings. Item number 10, Appeal of the Development Plan Permit 2022-2601 Sandstone Valley Apartments. Jarrett Ramaya, Deputy Development Director. This item will be discussed at a later date. Today, we will be opening the appeal hearing to receive public testimony and then considering a motion for continuation. I request that the council does not discuss this item today. I will, out of transparency, I'd like to state for the record that I was the appellate on this project. So staff, may we have the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor DeForest and council members. I'm Jarrett Ramaya, as stated in the record. I'm presenting a request for a continuance on a submitted appeal of the Sandstone Valley Apartments. When an appeal is filed, we're directed by the Development Code to have what's called a meet and confer. This is a meeting that's requested by staff, and who attends is the appellant and the applicant. We had that meeting on April 11th. The applicant voluntarily presented updated architecture for our consideration. We discussed that during the meet and confer. The appellant asked for additional changes for consideration, and the applicant voluntarily agreed to that. In order for the architects, for the applicant, to perform and bring back a product that would hopefully mimic what our request was, they need additional time. We believe that one month would be about the approximate need for that. We believe that one month would be about the approximate need for that, and so we're asking if we can continue tonight's item and return to City Council on May 18th. Our recommendation is open and continue the appeal hearing for one month to May 16th,
Thank you so much. I'd like to open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, is there any public testimony regarding this item?
Thank you, Lisa, for announcing that you were the appellant. Why is that important? 1678020A4 indicates that planning commissioners or City Council members are permitted to appeal a project three times per year. After that, they would have to pay the fee. How did that come about? Back in the early 2000s, there were two council members that would appeal projects, mostly multifamily projects, based on either who the consultant or developer was or on what the project was, multifamily. And that's how that came about. One of the council members that was doing that on a regular basis happens to be a 12-count convicted felon. Another one of the council members, when he was mayor and I served on the Planning Commission, called me into his office one day when he was having mayor's hours at Old City Hall. And he told me, it was after a planning commission hearing where we had voted on a multifamily project, and he told me that he and the councilman, the other councilman, didn't like the way I was voting on projects. And he proceeded to tell me, quote, "It only took three votes to put you on the commission. It would only take three votes to take you off of it," end quote. And for those of you that know me, I leaned across the table and I said to him, "If you've got the votes, take them. Otherwise, don't try and influence me." So that's why it's important to me that it's disclosed who the appellant is, and in the staff report, it didn't identify which council member appealed the project and only referred to the council member as the appellant. That's the first thing, so thank you very much for that. Secondly, the staff report indicated that the basis of your appeal was on architecture and that it didn't meet the objective standards that were required to be in place January 1st of 2018. Not only as a resident, but more now as a development consultant that represents some projects in town here for multifamily, it would be helpful for us to know what those concerns were ahead of time, reading the staff report, so that we kind of have a heads-up on our projects and saying, okay, you know, maybe in this case, staff found that it was consistent. The Planning Commission, although amongst a lot of discussion, if I may wrap up, approved the project. So the staff report was a bit vague, and I'm just looking for a little more information. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Kasten, I'm Madam City Clerk. Is there any other public speakers?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Moving on, can I have a motion and a second to continue the appeal? All right, thank you for the motion and second, and everyone can vote. All right.
Motion carries unanimously, four zero.
Thank you. The appeal will be continued to a hearing date to certain of May 16th, 2023. Thank you. Moving on to a discussion item, SB 1205, Compliance Report for State Mandated Annual Fire Inspection, Fire Chief Malloy.
Good evening again, council. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here this evening to present SB 1205 Annual Report to Council. This is as a result of Senate Bill 1205, so we affectionately call it SB 1205 Reporting in the Fire Service. California signed into law Senate Bill 1205 in 2018. SB 1205 amended the California Health and Safety Code as of January 1st, 2019, to add Section 13146.4. This new provision in the Health and Safety Code, wow, typo, sorry, requires fire departments who are mandated to perform annual inspections pursuant to Sections 13146.2 and 13146.3 of the Health and Safety Code to report their compliance annually to its administrating authority, in this case, that is the City Council. The Health and Safety Code 13146.2 and .3 mandate fire departments conduct annual inspections of all public and private schools, hotels, motels, lodging houses, and apartment houses. So just for understanding, 6.2 and 6.3 have been in the Health and Safety Code for quite some time mandating these inspections. I don't know the history of when, but it's been since the early 2000s at least. And only in a few years ago did we add the new section that required that we report our compliance to our governing boards. Pursuant to this new Health and Safety Code section, Marietta Fire and Rescue is submitting this report to demonstrate the fire department's compliance with this section of the Health and Safety Code. This is required that we do this annually, by the way. This is the first report that's been delivered to the City Council of Marietta. I'm happy to report that Marietta Fire and Rescue's community risk reduction has achieved 100% compliance in inspecting the state mandated occupancies within the city of Marietta. In Marietta, we have 35 registered schools. These are E-occupancies in the fire code. We have five hotels, R1 occupancies, and 335 multifamily dwellings, and those are the R2 occupancies. And you can see the graph here that makes up how we divvy those up. In 2022, our inspectors completed all 375 state mandated inspections, and it's worth noting that these properties included in this category, they're very large, and it takes a considerable amount of time to complete the full fire inspection on these properties. Think of an apartment complex with 900 units, that takes a long time to cover, or a large high school. These are big projects. Our Community Risk Reduction Division has a plan in place that will ensure SB 1205 inspections will remain at 100% compliance, even with the substantial growth of R1 and R2 occupancies in the city. I would like to thank the City Council for giving us the resources in order to make sure that this happens in our city. There are many cities that don't have 100% compliance, and our council has given us the resources to make sure we happen. In addition to these inspections, we have 3,000 businesses in our city that we have to inspect, and over 8,000 defensible space inspections we have to do per year, as well as all of the construction inspections that are ongoing with the development we have going in our city. So thank you for these resources. So staff recommends the City Council adopt Resolution 23-4659 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Marietta, California Acknowledging Receipt of a Report Made by the Fire Chief of the Marietta Fire Department Regarding the Inspection of Certain Occupancies Required to Perform Annual Inspections in Such Occupancies Pursuant to Section 13146.2 or 46.3 of the California Health and Safety Code."
Thank you so much, Fire Chief Malloy. And I don't see I have any questions from any council members on our public speaking, so I will just say congratulations on 100% compliance. We're very proud of our fire department, and we are very excited that we are at 100% compliance. So I'll move on with Madam City Clerk. Are there any public comments regarding this discussion item?
Seeing none.
Thank you so much. Any other comments or discussion from my colleagues? Seeing none. Can I have a motion for approval? I know there's a race up here, and then all, everybody vote.
Motion carries unanimously, four zero.
Fantastic, thank you very much. And moving on to our Governing Board announcements. Madam City Clerk, Councilmember Warren's Governing Board announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to tell the fire department, I'm very sorry I wasn't at the barbecue. I heard it was delicious, and my son got there a little late and didn't get any barbecue. But he had a great time, so, and I know the community loved it, so good job, hats off. I'll be there next year, I promise. I did attend a lot, but as you can see on my list, you can, this is going to be on the website, but the one I really want to highlight was the Egg Extravaganza. I did find something very interesting that day, that Councilwoman Holliday, Councilwoman Stone, and Mayor DeForest have very good arms, because they throw eggs very well at each other. I had to get in on the egg tossing. I got Holliday right here. It was perfect. I have never seen so many happy youngsters, excited adults, staff enjoying themselves. A wonderful, wonderful event, and staff outstanding. Brian, please let your staff know how proud I am to be a part of this wonderful city, and the Egg Extravaganza was top-notch again. And let Laura and everybody know they did an outstanding job, and I really do appreciate all that they did. If you can see the next slide, we made up again. He's not mad at me, and it was just a great day. Also, another great thing that we attended on the 12th of April was the grand opening of Kaiser Permanente's Marietta Medical Building Number Two, which is just an exciting new medical facility in our community, which we dearly need. I love serving this city. I love being a part of it. I was able to host or be the speaker for the Networking Breakfast for the Marietta Minute on behalf of the mayor, because she was out of town, and I had the best meeting ever with our Economic Developer Director, Scott Eggenan, who got me up to speed at what's happening in the city. So thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. It's a great city. I love being here. I love what I do. If you need me, my phone number's there, my email's there, contact me anytime. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Warren and Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor DeForest. I also attended the Kaiser opening. I, you know, I work in the medical field, and seeing expansion in any medical service is amazing to see in the city. It's much needed and much appreciated. I look forward to many other expansions from others in the area, including Kaiser, as they talked about their hospital expansion, so fingers crossed that comes. I also attended the Fireman's Barbecue this year. I had the pleasure of being there for my personal business and City Council serving barbecue to the residents, and I am proud to say I got my yearly allotment of sun in about one hour. So my booth just happened to be in direct sunbeam to my face, but it was a great time. It was an amazing turnout. I don't, I mean, it had to have been a record for that amphitheater field to see that many people there, or close to at least. Great vibes, great time, and a great cause, and happy to be a part of it. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a whole list of things, but I'm not going to go through them all, so you can all say thank you. But I do want to highlight one. So as I was running for City Council and shortly after I got elected, I've been talking to a lot of people about the traffic lights at the freeway intersections of the many roads we have in Marietta. A lot of people aren't aware that the city of Marietta does not control those lights. Caltrans controls most of the lights that intersect their freeways, because they want to get traffic off the freeway. And I've been told by other jurisdictions that had tried and failed to gain control over those lights for their city, because it's crucial to have that flow, like across hot springs, to be able to get that traffic to flow through. So on April 10th, I was, with the help of Senator Ciardo's office, I was able to have a meeting with Caltrans, and we had our city engineer, Bob Maling, on the call, along with our traffic engineer and several of Caltrans staff. And I was ready for a fight, because it's common sense that a city should be able to control the traffic flow through its town. And so I laid out my complaint, and I laid out my solution, and to my surprise, the acting deputy director said, "Yeah, we can do that, and we've already done it in other cities." And Mr. Maling said, "Could you send us one of those agreements?" And we had the agreement before we were off the meeting. So that process is moving forward. We have several really good options to control that traffic flow across the many intersections of the freeways in our community. Thank you to Mr. Maling and the other staff that involved on that, and I'm looking forward to seeing better flow of traffic. So we got something good accomplished, and that is all I have.
Thank you so much for that great news. I know we all want to move through on green lights, so thank you. Moving on to my Governing Board announcements. First, I'd like to just say that we all up here wish Mayor Pro Tem Stone a speedy recovery. So, and we miss her tonight, so. Moving on to my Governing Board announcements, I guess, once you get this mayor's hat, you go to everything. So I have three pages that you can read through at your earliest convenience and have a good time, but I have been spending a lot of time with my colleagues as well, and if you flip through those for me, my dear, one of the one things I'd like to point out is we did travel to Sacramento to meet Assemblywoman Sanchez, Senator Ciardo, California Department of Transportation and State Transportation Budget Commission. We flew up and flew back on the same day. Hats off to our city manager and Kristin Crane, our Assistant City Manager. It was a fantastic day of lobbying our elected to make sure they know where we are. We talked a lot about Keller, and we're really pushing for our Keller Interchange and a regional training center. So it was a lot of fun, my first experience lobbying for the city, and it was an honor to be pushing everyone to know exactly where Marietta was. So my cellphone, personal cellphone is listed there, and that is my email address. Please reach out to me if you need anything. One of my mayor duties is to be connected by community, so I can be connected by cellphone. So if you need to reach me, reach out that way. If I don't call back, then shoot me a text, because, you know, my life is crazy, because I went to four pages of things this week. So anyway, thank you so much, and I'd like to move on to any council member requests to add items to future agendas. Is there any of my colleagues? No. So now would be the time to, a council member requests to add item to a future agenda. So seeing none? All right. So before we adjourn this evening, I'd like to adjourn thinking about a fellow council member, Carly Meyer of Hemet. Carly Meyer passed away last night after a battle with cancer. She served as Hemet mayor, she served as council member for many years. She was a lifelong Hemet resident. And I'd like us in Marietta to hold our sister city and hold her family in thoughts and prayers and make sure she's in your thoughts. So on that note, I'd like to adjourn in honor of Councilmember Carly Meyer, and I'd wish you all a very good night, and it is 7 o'clock.